Okay, so now we are unmuted. I think Jenna and Nona are on Zoom. So we can call this meeting to order at 12:05. I'm supposed to take role, official role?
Yes, apparently that's what the lady said that night.
Did she say that? I must have missed that. For board members, just for the board members, right?
Just for the board members.
That we posted? Yes, always.
Yes.
Yeah. Emily's fantastic at that.
You just go around and say, start.
Kimberly Hill present.
Danielle Gluck present.
Nancy Grossman, I'm here.
Janet, Nona, can you hear us at least? Give us a thumbs up for chat.
I'm here. Hi, good morning. Would you turn your...
Somebody needs to turn that down. Janet, can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect, awesome. Sounds great. All right, so the first thing on, well, any changes for the agenda?
Not for me.
So we'll move on to the Zoom policy. We're gonna kind of, we're gonna do this one first because we have the members that needed to be on Zoom this meeting. So we're gonna jump to the beginning. So it's a little bit out of order, but that's why we're doing it that way.
Can they see me then?
And I actually did have one that I thought about after. I kind of want to think like under the voting by Zoom can be none of any matter. So the one to four, I kind of feel like board members should show their face. Does that make sense? I don't know. It's just...
On video or you want me to?
I just kind of want to, I want to add it to like that it should be, we just, I mean, we can hear your voices and I, we know it to you, but I don't know. I think it'd just be good to have a face.
How do I get it to stay?
I think it will. It should stay.
But I have to hold it there in front of me then?
Maybe just for, how about just for voting?
Yep.
You can see your lips move. I don't know. Maybe I'm being too particular about it. Anybody else have a comment on that?
No.
Yeah, sorry.
Been in your last months.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I'm good.
So just, I don't know how we want to word that. Let's say like during voting processes, or during the voting process, or members on Zoom need to have video on. They have video on.
To vote, maybe to vote during the voting process. Must.
Or the board members?
Yeah.
I also feel like it could be a problem when we go into executive session to be able to zoom in because there's no way to guarantee privacy on the other end. Does that make sense? Like they can have people in the room with them in executive session. Like it's hard to guarantee privacy.
Do we talk about that earlier?
But maybe it's something that we could add of like, in the case of executive session, or I don't know how moving into executive session will be handled on a case by case basis. Because you could see if it was a very sensitive topic, we might have to be like, no, but if it was a favorable evaluation, then privacy wouldn't be as much of an issue. Does that make sense?
I would agree with that. I agree with Kim. Just for executive session, right?
Right.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
And then my other, and I'm sorry, I should have got these together. Sorry, I don't know. So in the case of executive session, like then the Zoom part isn't on or that the cameras are on?
Uh, we could say, so if I need to...
Case by case, like you said, I think that case by case basis is important.
Yeah.
Because sometimes I think it...
Yeah. It could be like, should the board move into executive session? The chairman may decide on a case by case basis to discontinue Zoom. Participation, would that be the right word? Here we go.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Not going to be a bullet point. I guess the phrase is attend remotely, but I don't know.
Do we vote on that?
Not yet, yeah. Let me make sure. So I have, in the instance of executive session, the chairperson can decide on a case by a case basis if the Zoom meeting should continue. Or if the Zoom option should...
That makes sense because...
In the instance of executive session, the chairperson can decide on a case by case basis if the Zoom meeting should continue. Zoom, or should I say Zoom option?
Zoom option.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I had the one in there that we took out. That said that some of them would have to be face to face to make some votes.
Perfect. For voting, that was for voting.
Yeah, that was for voting, but it's the same thing, a face to face for, yeah, the Zoom participation.
For executive session.
And that would make sense with the camera. So if we can vote by raised hand, you can verify who's actually on the other end of the...
Right.
Okay, so then does this need...
Or can we pass it now? Well, a second reading, so probably, but I have one more question. I'm sorry. So, second bullet point. All recordings will be made available to the public and this can just cross across my desk. So how or like how... So there should, there will be a way that I should be able to put that online that I'm working on. So I think, I don't know if it like, we have to get like a YouTube channel or if we have to get a certain, I just haven't had the time. Which is fine. And I figured that, but do we want to put like the wording in there on where or how they can get that?
Uh, no, because it might change too. Because if it's, if we can do it one way to start with, but then have a more efficient, cheaper...
The way it comes up. Instead of changing the policy when that...
Right. Because they'll...
If anybody at this point right now, if anybody can, they can go to the website and click on the contact, the library, or they can email me, or they can call or stop by and I can provide that Zoom link, which I have done for a variety of people. So that's where we are right now, but...
And working on going forward to it'll just be public. Yeah. All right, so then do we want anything from the public?
I just had a question. So is it going to be a part of the Zoom policy? It will be a part of the Zoom policy that the recordings will be made available. Is that in the writing?
Yep, Ethan already says that.
Yep, it says the recording will be made available to the public in the second bullet point.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that would be great.
All right, then with those changes, this is a second reading, so I would like to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Zoom board meeting policy as written with the additions we've talked about today.
One second.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same time? Motion carried. All right, on to public comments on the items on the agenda.
I can start. I can start. Before the minutes are approved, I would like to make a revision or see a revision. The minute states, under when I requested the book list be printed monthly, the request is there, but Emily stated that she would do that and deliver it to Big Sandy. And that's not in there. So I'd like to see that added to the minutes. And regarding that too, I was just in the objectives of the library. One of the objectives is to provide easy access to the materials. And I just feel like the printed book list would be easy access and probably the easiest access, actually. So that's all I have for revision for the minutes.
Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, bye, Emily.
All right, so we'll move on to the consideration of approval of the October 25th minutes. Meeting minutes. Next, CG mic?
Yeah, that was perfect right before I grabbed them.
So then do we want to talk about adding what we talked about that, sorry, I've taken that out because you're requesting that it wasn't, or was discussed yet. I'm sorry, I took it off.
I did have the copy saved, but it was on there though.
Okay, so, I know, I don't know what the right way to call that it is. So, Michelle asked for each month of the book list, and then it was to be printed off for Big Sandy. So it could go in the binder, however we're displaying that. And it was talked about and I thought it was a good, I was under the impression that that was your response.
So then I was actually kind of wrong.
Okay. Because it's not monthly. Because it's not, because the books don't come in. It's not like we get a book delivery once a month or something. So it's just generally what I thought. So we can talk about that and see what that would look like and talk with Maren and see what is how feasible and...
I misspoke, that was my...
Curiosity. Did you say the list would get it?
Curiosity. Well, I don't know if you want to do it as books. I mean, because if you do it every, like, it would be every other day.
It has to be.
Has to be efficient for the public, but information still needs to be available. So I think that we can come to a conclusion on it, on how that's going to look. We just might need to...
Well, we'll need to talk to Maren.
Right. But I think we can come to an agreement on how that looks pretty easily.
Yeah.
Do you want to discuss MR now or just focus on the minutes?
Both we need.
Yeah.
Because Maren's on. Maren.
Okay.
So can we put that as an item on next month's agenda? And Mary, we can come down here and kind of go, you know, see what works for, for everybody. The patient getting the information, but also being efficient on not having to do it every day.
Yeah.
Not that anyone's asking for it every day, that's not.
But I think the summary of our thoughts are, we're trying to move away from including discussion in the minutes. And since this particular discussion didn't result in an action, maybe we may not add, add it to the minutes until we decide how we'll actually update the book. Since Michelle, like, is that a good summary for, she has requested to add Emily's statement that she would print it out for Big Sandy. We may not add that to the minutes at this time since that was discussion that turned out to not be an action we're going to take until we line out an actual schedule. Or should we consider adding to the minutes that there was discussion about having a hard copy?
I like that. There was discussion about, right? Because there was discussion that happened.
Yes, about providing hard copy updates to the book list to the Big Sandy branch.
Right.
I think that'd be accurate.
And then there's still, yeah, there's, it's on paper then, that we talked about it, yeah. I think, I think that we can come up with it.
And then next minutes for this could just say discussion continued. The project is a whole...
It can be an item on the agenda that Maren comes in, like she can work on it this month and see what that looks like for when she orders books and how she orders books, how, when she could print it out for us. It is weird that it kind of has eyes.
There's, we've won Kids Movie about the garden gnomes having lives. So these guys, you know, pop around and talk to each other. Yeah, it could be cheerful. Big speaking horse coat.
All right, anything else on the minutes? Are you going to say something?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I second. Did you hear that?
We did, yes.
Okay. Good job.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side? Motion carried. All right, on to budgets. Well, those butter mints are good. My goodness.
How many did you get? It's like a thousand. Oh, okay. Giant bag of butter mints.
What are you using for, Emily?
They're at the desk.
Oh.
Comes coming.
Okay.
Everybody appreciates it, yeah. And they last a long time, so.
Do we share them with the other branches?
Nobody has requested.
I'm on a quest. Okay. Story hour.
Big fan.
Yeah, I'll go through five of those.
So just a, just a curiosity with canopy. Do we basically, like if someone watches a canopy movie, then do we get a bill or is... Okay. Do we basically, like, if someone watches a canopy movie, then do we get a bill? Or is, okay.
Yeah, there's like a certain, you prepay a certain amount and, or I don't, I'm not exactly sure how it works, but.
Uh huh. Okay, so this kind of reflects that people are using canopy.
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Kona.
Um, travel on before Benton, four hundred and twenty-six, six thirty-two. Where was that?
So that was the fall MLA fall retreat that was in Chico. So that was for gas and one night of lodging.
Did every, who all went? We didn't.
I, I just went.
Okay. Can you, do we need to know when you're going? So I mean, I mean, I'm being picky. Do we need to know when you're going somewhere, Emily? Or does it matter?
I guess that would be a discussion for board members to have.
Should we hold on?
Okay.
Did it, did you find it to be useful? Continuing education opportunity or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and it was also, so that would be the first one that I went to. I felt it was important to find out what it was like for myself, what it was about. Before I just would send whoever. So moving forward, and I don't know if it's in every, see, it's coming out of travel restrictions with COVID. And then like last summer of 2022, they combined a couple of different ones. So I, so I'm not sure what's like regular and not regular. So it's not something I would probably do every single year. It would depend on what was going to be on the
Agenda.
Agenda for it.
And I think we're kind of going forward to try to, the goals for continuing education will be kind of written out. So that will also help us understand what's going on and where, who's going where and just, you know, for our knowledge as board members.
Yeah, and which, which positions, like, which ones need a live continuing education.
That's gonna look a little bit different with more communication and more understanding of what's happening this next year.
Was on Zoom. Yeah, that was the day after that board meeting.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, definitely Christmas, honey.
All right, did everyone get a chance to look at the budget over? Any more questions? Okay. And I would like to entertain a motion. I lack for the words. Go for it.
I'm moved that we approved the budget.
I have a second. I second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, I can see you. No, no, but I can't hear you.
Aye.
There we go. Yep.
Okay.
All opposed, same side. Anna, am I supposed to hear you? I didn't hear you on either one of those.
Who didn't you hear?
I didn't hear you.
Oh. I said aye.
Okay. The motion carries. Thank you. All right. Onto branch reports. So for October. Big Sandy themes, don't leave the library without a good book, National Four-H Week. Friends of the Library Week, Halloween, and Dying to Read a Scary Story. Their projects are, their current project is continuing on to sort shelves and go through books, which has been great. Forbidden themes, domestic violence awareness, Vikings, adopt a shelter dog month, banned books week, Montana ghost stories, bats. Aerie stories, Halloween, media literacy, higher safety, mummies, and explorers, and geography. We got ready for the book and treat and spent a lot of time getting ready for Pathfinder that then did not happen. So. Geraldine Harvest in Halloween and still about, like, we've got the storage. And then Highwood, we did end up finding the interlocal agreement that we did, that was signed in 2010, and Maren has been working on putting together a timeline in minutes and articles. So I would request that we form a committee to explore. There are some calls, I think, that need to be made. It's just a little too much for us to try to flush that completely out. To explore what it would look like in the future. Some options, so.
What, what will we be exploring? Did you hear me?
How to enhance services to the Highland population.
Are we building, we having a building or using the school, or you don't know at this time?
Well, that would be fairly far down the list.
I personally think it's a very responsible thing to find out where and what Highwood people are interested in.
Right, so that's what part of the committee. So Maren and I are currently in a research class for grad school, and our research project for the semester is how to put together that, like, but like a whole survey. It's not just a survey, but that is.
Like a formation.
Are part of ours. So that would be that would be part of what the committee does. I mean, we're not, it's not like I want to go and break ground on January 1st. It's not what I'm coming to the board with right now. I just want a committee to talk about what's some different, Kim's mentioned bookmobiles, we've talked about the school, we've had interest in, from someone else in Highwood about a space. I mean, there's, there's a lot to explore. I'm not.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Should that be a separate item under new business? Or would we have to put it on a later?
Oh, to form a committee. Or can we do that right out?
I think it's just a committee, because it's not an action.
Right.
Item. It's just a volunteer. Like, Kim, wouldn't that have to be on that committee?
That could, I imagine.
Yep. And then there's our.
Yeah, because we don't have to. Maritana in the basement. Also, had a woman's blood person came and found a whole load of missing minutes from like the thirties to the sixties. So it's been a productive couple weeks.
Nice.
Janet and Nona. Does that committee sound, I mean, you have a say also if you wanted to. I mean, we can only have two board members on the committee, but I want you guys to.
I would think Nancy would be the given.
Yeah, Nancy should be the given.
Yeah.
Representing Highwood in my mind.
Um, I think having a survey of the town, having a survey to, to the people would be a great idea. I guess if Nancy, we're a long ways away, but I, if nobody else wants to be in there, I can be on it.
Well, I agree to be on, but, um, yes, I, I said I'd be on, but we want to give you guys a chance to, to get on the committee if you have strong feelings for it.
I would like to know, that my feeling is, I would like to know what the town thinks. That's all.
Right, and I think that's I think that's what the committee is going to do. They are going to, I mean, I don't think they're gonna make any decisions without going to.
Do you wish a nomination? Or do you wish a title for it?
I just want to know who wants to be on the committee.
We didn't want to leave you guys out since.
That's fine, that's fine. Move ahead, move on.
Okay, so Kim and Nancy are on that committee.
Sounds good.
Perfect. All right, so we did Big Sandy, Highwood.
And there's, if anybody has anything on, on the circulation.
Statistics are the financial totals, so. Looks like you guys had a banner month for information requests. Do you think increased tourism or just people on the bound?
Looks good to me.
All right. Good vibes.
Yeah, I think kudos to whoever set up the Zoom. In time for us to do it last month.
Yes.
I do agree. Yep, Zoom is good.
At this time of year.
Yeah, you never know.
That's an interesting. So I have a good vibe. So on Facebook, Big Sandy Library is doing this know, K-N-O-W dash V-E-M-B-E-R. So instead of November, it's know. And there are all kinds of, did you know? And so sliced bread was first manufactured by machine in the 1920s, and then just the other day ago, it was, do you know Veterans Day does not have an apostrophe in it? Because it refers to all the veterans. So it's been kind of, kind of interesting. I've enjoyed it.
Oh, fun. Yeah, that's cool.
That was earlier in the meeting. I think around our mute, I was laughing about this book, Sunshine. I picked up, having no idea what it's about, but actually it deals with a very hard topic, but my 12-year-old daughter, I think, actually got a lot out of it, and it was very helpful for her. Cause in middle school, they're starting to see their classmates go through hard stuff, because they're already going through hard stuff. And I think as a parent, you would manage to shield your kid from anything emotionally difficult, but it actually was a good book for her to read. And so I guess good job getting the hard books rather than just all happy, happy books. We might have to get, yeah, I know you guys don't like labels, but you could get like a cheer label of like sad and put up at the top of the books.
What is the name of the book, Kim?
Called Sunshine. It's about a teenager that volunteers at a summer camp for young children with cancer.
Oh, oh, yes. That was, yeah, yeah. They're kind of inspirational, and you can put the little sun on them.
They're kind of. I, you know how it is, it's, it's easier to read about hard things.
Oh, yes.
Go through it. Yeah.
Is it a novel or a graphic novel?
I think it's a graphic novel. Yes. Yep. But yeah.
Good, that sounds good. Is there only one copy?
No. Oh, there's only one. Here, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know. I don't off the top of my head know if there are other branches, but we only have one. We usually only keep one copy on. On to your, your report.
Who's report?
Emily.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So one of the things I was gonna talk about the last meeting that I ended up not because of the switch, but is the continuing education plan from the state. And so Nona, I'm not sure if you have a copy of this yet, because I was gonna hand them out last time. And I don't know if I included it. I don't know if I sent it to you or not. Anyway.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
I'd have to dig.
No, we didn't.
Okay. Can you email me one then?
I should be able to, yeah. So Janet, I, I gave you and Danny ones at the.
Yeah, that was just last week.
Right. Okay. So this will go hand in hand with evaluations when I do staff evaluations, and then every individual staff member will be able to, we will work together to create their, what their plan is for their own individual learning. So it won't be everybody has to do this many continuing ed credits. It depends on what people would like to do. And then we can look at the MLA calendar and the opportunities available from the state library. And to make sure that it is budgeted for correctly and time made available to make sure that everyone is getting what they want from there.
So, do the trustees have an opportunity to maybe look at the classes they would like the director to look at?
We talked about that last year during my evaluation, and I did fulfill.
But I mean, we don't know what classes are until we see them. That's what I mean.
That kind of feels like we would not be, well, I know I'm not an expert, you know, in topics for library continuing education. I doubt Emily would know much about continuing education for crop insurance. So I don't know if it's.
No, no. I don't, I, I'm sorry if you misunderstood me. So Emily is doing this for all her people, correct? Everybody that is under you as a director. I'm just asking, is there something that, that the trustees can look at to be classes we feel would interest us for Emily to go to? I mean, that's a perfect level. I'm not, I think it's perfect. But then there is one step above that. And that's called the trustees.
I think it's a chain.
Think that the communication with continuing edu- education is gonna be the the biggest thing. I think just communication. I don't think Emily and I would have a problem sitting down and looking at classes together and seeing which ones she can explain things to me and I can ask questions. I think that's probably a good way of doing that. Am I kind of understanding what you're saying, Janet?
I think you're kind of understanding.
If I remember right, we were kind of moving towards the director having one supervisor to communicate with versus us as a whole.
Have there been classes that I've taken, Janet, that you don't?
No, I'm not saying that. I mean, it's just, um, you know, everything I read in my manuals, I don't have the exact copy in front of me, says that the board works as a group, a unit, not as an individual person. But I can understand where you're working with this now. But I still think the board has some responsibility on the whole thing.
The whole thing being.
The whole thing. Well, okay, I think that actually the trustees need to know when the director is going to be gone. It's part of our job. It's part of the responsibility to the community also. So, I mean, and I was under Debbie Wellman. So, I mean, and I was under Debbie Wellman, I was under Sh- Sandra, and we always made sure, I mean, it's just like we let them know when we're not going to be at a meeting, okay? Correct? That's why you know that I'm here. So I think it it makes the same thing, that if the director's out, because that just puts down the responsibility, you know, on so, on the board, if something would happen. I don't see where I'm taking anything away. I think I'm just streamlining cause there still is a vital responsibility to the board from the director.
Well, you feel that I have um, missed a lot.
So Janet, I think it's a big difference on if you want the board to have access to the director's schedule. So that we can facilitate, facilitate disciplining the director, or if we can facilitate helping the director.
Helping. It's, it's the access to it, okay? So I mean, just like we have everything showing who's coming, who's going to be at the library, when the library is closed. It just has always been from the time I've been in with Debbie Wellman, that if a director is going to be out of town, because there's things that happen, okay? I mean, fires, water leaks, all kinds of stuff.
I don't ever remember having a schedule of the director, and I think I've been on.
No, I mean, I'm not asking for her schedule. This is a director who is not in Shoto County at that time.
How? She lives in Fort Benton?
No, she was gone for continuing.
Well, true, but like I don't ever remember with Sandra having a schedule of Sandra's travel.
I think that. I think that the, I, I remember when Sandra was, like, I feel like we've talked about it. I don't think it needs to be as um, rigid as maybe it's coming across. I think that it's going to be communication, it's going to be on the form. Things are going to change, yes. We are going to have the library continuing education plan filled out in advance. So we should know as a board where everybody's going for continuing education. And when. That's what the forms were.
And it's on the form.
So if the form is accurate, which I would assume that it's going to be accurate until something, if something changes, which life happens. I think that this form is going to be fantastic. Yeah, you wanna, I mean, Janet, how about trying it with the form? I think I think that if Emily gets us the forms, it's going to be, we're gonna know, because it's on the form.
And if it comes to the meeting, should it? Yeah, then we know.
That works fine.
So I think we're still, uh, we'll be in the loop on when the director is gone because of this form. Knowing when the employees are gone, also the library.
That's true.
Cause everybody, everyone should be. For continuing at, for continuing education. And I, and I was available also. For calls and. And one of the days was a Sunday, and I traveled on Saturday. So.
Moving on.
So I, I really don't, we're getting ready for, so I guess it kind of goes into well, actually, no, I do wanna touch on, this happened just was this week, but we had Courtney Cowgill. There was a question last month about the cost of my next program, which happened Monday and Tuesday, and that was I spoke with humanities Montana people who were in town Friday, also a day off, and I met with them. And um, there will be no cost for that program now. They're very cognizant of that. And Courtney came Monday evening and Tuesday, we did add a Zoom option. That was kind of the, at the last minute. But has now opened, um, I mean, we were doing these meetings on Zoom, but I think we will be able to um, have more online access for our programming now. And so um, so she was delightful, talked about local news, the importance of local news. Um, I'm, I'm gonna try, that's gonna be part of figuring out how to get these meetings. These meetings also online and available to the public, um, so that I can then put those kinds of things on also. Yeah, so it was, we had somebody zoom in from a grain truck yesterday and watched the program and asked questions. So that was, that was great. And we were still able to have Bethany and do our panel with Bethany. Even though she was not able to be on site. So that was no cost. That was.
I was excited to see that. Thank you for having it on Zoom. My Delta didn't carry it.
Yeah. So, so kind of now leading into the dates to remember, but also, so I do need board permission for the all, well, Geraldine's already closed on Fridays, but for the two other branches to uh, be closed the day after Thanksgiving. That just needs to come from the board. We've done it historically.
Give me a motion.
I move that all the branch libraries are closed November twenty third and twenty fourth for Thanksgiving.
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Same sign. Motion came. Who was that saying?
I said aye.
And Emily, Emily, I think um, if if I were to know about, if you get it to us that you're having programs in there on Zoom, I would probably listen in more because I don't wanna travel.
Right, and that one was very last minute, um, due to a illness and with a request. So, but now moving forward, now that I know that it works so well, that will be part of the, the plan moving forward. Um, so then also the next one, Shoto County Country Christmas, so that's a Saturday. And we again have historically been open, Big Sandy and Fort Benton for four hours on that Saturday. Um, ten to two, and then staff time offset during the week. Um, so that no, there's no need for comp or overtime. Um, just find a different window. And now that Big Sandy is, is double staff, hopefully that will work. For them to each find a slot during the week, um, to be able to, to do that. So. Yeah, so I think we need, since it's on a Saturday, we also. So I would entertain a motion. That we be open from ten to two on the second of December for Shoto County Christmas.
Can I make a motion that the branch, branches that choose to be open on December second are allowed to?
There you go. I like that.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. And then I didn't put a date for our next table talk, and actually now looking at that, I think I have to check the school calendar, so. But in December, we will have our next table talk as part of our continuing series. Hey. I'm to unfinished business. Policies is the first one. So we'll start with the child safety policy.
Well, I would like to talk, please. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I do not, I just don't want the thing in there about calling the police. I just think that's just not, not good. So have to come up with some ideas or something, but I don't want that in there. I think it's micromanaging. I don't, I don't, I don't. I think this child safety thing is a lot of extra writing, but I just don't like that part. And then unattended children should have a library related purpose. Well, most of them, whenever I've been in here, they're always on a computer uh, doing homework, doing something. So I think, I don't know. But I don't, I, I do not like the police part at all.
Do you have a suggestion for who staff should contact with a, a child?
Well, I was wondering if there could be a, any, a book tucked away so no one gets at it. That just has the parent of, of children that would possibly stay here that are that parents, sometimes there's parents that, you know, don't, the, the kids walk home or something, maybe to just have their phone numbers to say, hey, your child is still here, something like that. That's what I would do rather than calling the cops. Okay?
Well, you see that, you see that last sentence where it says attempts will be made during that ten minutes to reach a parent or caregiver?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so that's good. Yeah, but cut out the part about the police.
But if they can't get a hold of the caregiver, then what do they do?
Are we gonna pay overtime so somebody can sit here with a kid?
That's right. See, are you gonna do that?
Call a police officer, then.
I mean, we're not gonna put them out on the street when it's twenty below. We need to have a policy.
Where it came from, right? It was very cold.
And very little, like a five or six year old.
I mean, it's not necessarily a bad thing that the police are called. They have the responsibility, I mean, that's their job is to take care of.
It's not like they're being arrested.
Yes, but police are, are, you know, they have the facilities to handle that. Yeah.
That's just my opinion. If you overrule me, then you do, but I, yeah, yeah. I agree.
Well, what would be, what's the downside of having that in there, I guess?
But I mean. I don't know. It's a library. Do we have to get the police involved?
Yeah, I hope not. Goal is to. But the ultimate goal is the kid, yeah.
Consider to be safe to be around children.
Okay, then I guess put it in.
Okay, so, so could it just be a language problem?
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, because um, like in, in Big Sandy, and they have deputies rather than police. So it could say something about law enforcement, but maybe not police. Is that are we having a problem with the word?
The wording is if parents slash caregivers cannot be reached, law enforcement may be called. The closing tag. So let's, no, it does say police down below. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong way. I like that idea.
Well, um, that's just my opinion. I don't like, I don't like that in there, but if you think that's good and you're able to pay overtime to have the librarian stay here with the kid, then I guess that's fine.
That's what, that's what the law enforcement would come in, is it would prevent, it would prevent the librarian having to stay overtime. If we couldn't call law enforcement, if we did, if we chose not to call law enforcement, then you would be paying overtime for the librarian until she could get a hold of somebody to take their child. Because again, twenty below, we're not gonna kick a kid outside. That's not safe.
And I think there's probably liability issues on who, I mean.
Cause if we're to leave, then something happens to that child.
And who is safe to ask to kind of get him? Social services aren't open and are closing.
No, we don't have social services.
Yeah, no. So even for the safety of the child, law enforcement will be called.
If parents, caregivers cannot be reached for the safety of the child, law enforcement may be called. Because that's ultimately, I mean, also safety for the librarian too, because if they were to put them outside, they would imagine that would not.
You know, law enforcement is kind of like public. I mean, they know a lot that goes on.
Yep.
Like probably not if the mom's at the bar. Come on.
So, do you have a problem with this in, uh, in Fort Benton, Emily?
My understanding is that it, that is where this policy originally came from. Was from an incident that had happened in Fort Benton.
That is correct.
So that would have been in twenty twenty is when this was first adopted, June twenty, eighteen twenty twenty. So that was before. But it's part, part of policies is to protect the staff and, and the other part is to protect the public and then liability reasons. So do we wanna add it at that closing time one two? In the event that the child is still at the library, ten minutes after closing, the public, to the public, closing to the public. For the safety of the child, the law enforcement will be called to pick up their child. Will be called to pick up the child.
Because I think, I don't have the policy looking at it, but the words before that said they'll try to contact the parent.
Under, yes.
That sounds good.
I think that sounds good. Um, Nona, how you, how you feeling?
Yep, yep. It's you guys, you guys like it better than I do. So, you know, I'm just one person. And yeah, I've been in here closing time and there's no kids. I mean, they're. But, yep.
We have a policy about fires. We don't plan on there being any fires, but we have it.
All right. Okay, I rest.
All right. Any comments from the public? Okay, then I would like to entertain a motion on approving. Updated child safety policy with corrections.
I make a motion to approve the updated child safety policy with corrections.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries. Well, we, we, um, oh, no. So we talked to Tracy about that. So we don't have a policy. We're gonna need to do actions to make sure that. I mean, cause it was. All right, so on to the collection. Development policy. I have no idea how authors do it, because you read it and reread it and reread it and you stop. So under the philosophy of collections development.
Okay, back to the first page.
Back on the first page. I think we should just, it, I'm not necessarily taking out or adding anything. I'm just think that maybe I am adding. So the first engine, it says reflecting international, national and local trends. What if we just reword that to switching it to local, state, national, international? Cause really, we wanna focus on local first and then. Switching it to local, state, national, international, because really, we wanna focus on local first, and then.
So just.
Just re, like, just reorder. And then it says that we did it again. Under general criteria for selection, which is the third. Under the second bullet point.
Yeah.
With the international, national, local, I wanna say, local, state, national, international.
Okay.
Start, I mean, because. Right, and I think that it's just really important to keep it community based first. Not saying that we're not doing the rest of the stuff too, but like, focus on that first.
Okay.
Sounds good. Which, under philosophy of collection development, the second paragraph. To determine community needs and.
So timeout on that, where was the second thing? Those are kind of levels, in the second one. The second bullet point, yeah, see it? Okay, so, so I, what I have changed it to, the. Public library exists to open a window on the world, reflecting local trends, interests, and events, as well as national and international subjects. So it's sound. I just, I literally just wrote it down.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Emily, I'm sorry. Do you want me to read it? Could, could you read it again, I was out, I, just tell me where you're at in the, on the paper.
On, so there's the first page that's, that says collection development policy, so it's on the back of that first page, or the second page, it's at the top. Philosophy of collection development, and so it begins, the public library exists to open a work. Window on the world, comma, and then reflecting was already there, so I'm changing this next part. So reflecting local trends, interests, and events, as well as national and international subjects. You're just what state, and there's maybe what local. Interest and events as well as state, national, national, international.
So you're just rearranging the sentence in a sense, right, yeah, okay.
Okay, we're just. So then I will do that same wording, yeah, under criteria for suggestion. Right, where's that?
Next paragraph, it's down here.
Thank you.
Yeah, it must be, that's right.
All right, and then. Cause, I'd like to bring it up, adult graphic novels. What we have in here is materials requested or purchased, sorry, this is a little bit, one, two, three, four, five, sixth page.
So it just, it just is graphic.
Under graphic novel?
So what are you heard of then? I just wanna make sure that we're, if we can define that. But I know that's super difficult, so.
So adult collection is the underlying heading?
There's graphic novels under young adult, and there's. So materials requested or purchased that are not appropriate for the young adult audience will be placed in the adult nonfiction graphic novel collection. It just doesn't define anything, so. What page is that?
So it's the top of the.
So they're going to the collection, which is the, same, and so there's children's collection, young adult collection. Graphic novel slash manga, and then it's that last bit on there.
Right.
I don't think we can define it, because books are so hard to define.
I just wanted to open it up for discussion.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know, I would love, like, I would love an answer to that question, like, how to define it. And I mean, it doesn't have to be like, a needle hole defining, but just.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, it's the Statue of David appropriate.
Even the book that you brought down, because they write, some people are not going to find that.
Yeah, I think it's indefinable, because literature is a form of art, and art is unable to be. Really broken down into bullet points.
So, so there's no, like, laws out there, anything that we should be abiding by?
I think it's all, well, I think there are, but I think if you tried to define it, it'd be a entire book. There probably are books.
There are obscenity laws, but nothing that we have here. Maybe so, means that.
Yeah.
Are. For the law. And then lawyers are exempt from parts of the, the state statutes.
Is it okay for public comment right now?
Yeah, I think on the subject, yeah.
Okay, I just had a question, maybe for Emily, when we had our meeting. Um, you had stated that you and Maren both had sent books back, based on their appropriateness. And you never clarified what that was, but that was an indicator to me that there was a, a line. That could maybe be followed, and at least if it was clarified what that line was, not that it has to be. You know, I, I just feel like, we're, I think there could be an agreement, and then people would know what that line is. And we could know, you know, it's not gonna cross over this line or whatever, it would just make the public more aware, so I guess. Maybe the question I have is more for Emily, maybe you could discuss what those books would have been, and what made you make those decisions?
I have some thoughts too, if you need time to gather your thoughts. I think that's what makes it so difficult, because. There's one book in the children's section, I think both Emily and I have read to our kids, and it is whoever wrote The Hungry Hungry Caterpillar. Eric, yes, and it is, basically, it's a story of creation, but on one of the pages, it is a man and woman. And there's not really detail, but the man is definitely a tripod shape, so that has. You could potentially describe that as containing full frontal male nudity. But it's not, I mean, it's basically an outline because of how his art is, right, like, his art is pasted tissue paper. So that is a very difficult line to describe, like, if you had to say, like, does this book have full frontal male nudity, be like, well.
Maybe.
I guess, I mean, it shows what's going on in the pants. Yes.
In first grade and kindergarten.
Yes, but it is in no way, and yes, I think any first grader would not find that offensive, despite their, no matter what their gender, like. I think a little girl would look at that and be like, oh, whatever, or be like, what is that, but I mean, it's not harmful to children. Whereas, other books with full frontal male nudity would be extremely inappropriate.
But Mrs. Miller did say that obscenity is not protected by the First Amendment. And also, our code, for Montana code, does say what obscenity is, it's just in black and white. But it does, the, the House Bill two, three, four, does allow libraries and museums to be. But that is for the fines, what is fine, but also on the latest version of two, three, four. It does say that libraries, schools, towns, whatever it was, can adopt to ordinances. That are more restrictive for their own people.
But I think my point is, is putting those restrictions into words on paper is extremely difficult.
That, no, they do show the descriptions and the words. And the law, Montana articulated code, it does show, there's a, you can look it up under obscenities. And it lists them all the way down, and even if you go into, it says obscenity. There is a clause that, um, about whether a minor is eighteen years old. But all of that is there, I don't have it on me, but I have it at home, but it does give the permission. In House Bill two, three, four, that cities, libraries, towns, counties, or school districts. May adopt ordinances, resolutions, or policies that are more restrictive. As to display and the, and obscene materials. So there is a clause in that new House Bill. So, I mean, if we're talking about the House Bill and what it allows for libraries and museums, there still is another clause at the end. That allows schools, towns, counties, libraries to make, um. Restrictions or policies, and I don't think we're talking about the woolly woolly worm, okay? Or caterpillar, whatever, so.
But there's also freedom of speech and constitucional laws.
Yes, but that freedom of speech, Mrs. Miller says. That is not protected.
Emily, can you read that sentence that started this conversation?
The graphic novels.
Materials requested or purchased that are not appropriate for the young adult audience will be placed in the adult nonfiction graphic novel collection. We don't know how to define that.
The word inappropriate.
Inappropriate, not appropriate.
I think you can go back to your Montana, your MAC, it tells you in there what's appropriate.
Yes, I, I still have yet to have anyone come and talk to me about inappropriate. Materials that are in the library or to submit any challenge forms, so I don't. I, I did some interesting reading this last week about the difference between morality and ethics, morals and ethics, and oftentimes. Morals and ethics, the word morals and the word ethics are used interchangeably, and, um. Morals, morality governs private actions, but ethics apply to everyone, and ethically, as librarian. I'm required to provide materials to everyone, morally, as private citizens. You are allowed to not read those materials, so I, I still would like to sit and have a conversation with people. Um, I had a staff member that was accused of forcing a book with a transgender character. On their small child, um, but then that person has refused to come and have a conversation about that, or even say what the. Title of that book is, I have heard. A rumor going around town that we have books in our children's room that teach children how, how to masturbate, and yet no one has walked in the doors and said. You, I know this book is about children's masturbation, and I want to see where it is on the shelf, if you have that book. I am finding it very difficult to have these conversations again and again in this setting, during a board meeting when no one will come to me. As has been laid out by the board, I am not comfortable defining. Right now, in paper, on what is appropriate, because as we talked about in September, Michelle. Your definition of what is appropriate for a teen is different than what my definition is for a teen, so I do not think. That we can define that.
Thanks, Emily, I'm sorry, I was trying to break in there, so then maybe what the public needs to know, I think. Part of the problem with not having your public come to you is possibly because this policy has not been defined, and so. It's hard to fill out a form when there's no policy beings like. You know, this is inappropriate, because there's no, it seems to me like there wouldn't be a great purpose in filling out a form. If, um, the collection policy states that anything goes.
Michelle, you under the impression that the form requires you to directly reference policy to justify the objection?
No, I just think that the policy should, this collection policy should coincide with. The recommendation as well, because it would just help people know, it just makes a line, I guess you could say. Um, but I think maybe a conclusion to this would be just don't put appropriate, don't, don't say anything.
Just remove the book, just remove that sentence.
Yeah, just remove the sentence, and then people know that there is no definition.
Good idea.
So the graphic novels would just be that first sentence, these books are primarily.
Yes, I mean, unless you wanna say the appropriateness is based on the library director's discretion. And will be placed in the nonfiction graphic novel section. But then at that, if you're gonna say that, it seems like the library director should have a definition of what that is.
Okay, so just remove that.
Gets covered in the paragraph above, main characters are generally teenagers or preteens, this is un, under young adult, this is. Graphic novels that are in the adult section, main characters are generally teenagers or preteens, and the subject matter is of specific interest to young adults. The collection may also include nonfiction, nonfiction classics in the graphic novel format, that, I mean. That's different than what is found in the adult graphic novel section.
Well, I see the same, I'm sorry, but I see the same paragraph on my sheet that is in the young adult graphic section versus the adult, it says the exact same thing.
No, it does say, you're right, we, we put it there, we put it in both spots, I, but I, so I'm referring. First to the part in the young adult section, that is just what I was addressing, was this first part, so. I think the description, that does cover it, main characters are generally teenagers or preteens. And the subject matter is of specific interest to young adults, so again, going back to Kim's example of Sunshine, you said, because it's a book about. Teens, right?
Yes.
So that's why that book is in the young adult graphic novel section, is because the main characters are preteens and teens. Versus being in the adult section, so.
But I think Michelle has a valid point in that most of what this section of the policy is defining, like, just a pure definition of. What is a large print book, was a graphic novel, and these sentences actually kind of jump into procedure.
Right.
So we could pull them from this section. Is that what you're thinking, Michelle?
You're saying to just delete the materials requested or purchased that are not appropriate, yeah, it doesn't seem to fit.
Right.
Oh, definition for what that is, it doesn't seem appropriate to have it in there.
Okay.
However, if anybody wants to reconsider a book, you don't have to have a policy behind it, you just write what you think and turn it in.
Yes.
And there is, I mean, we, but, yeah, which this is, that's different policies, so. There is a policy and procedure for reconsideration of a book. And I do, I do see what you're saying, Michelle, that it should back up, all, all our policies should coincide with each other, they should work together.
Right.
See what, like, so if you want to, like, if somebody wanted to, um. Have a reconsideration form, they would pull, if they really wanted to do their due diligence, you would pull the collection development policy. And hopefully that would answer your question on the book.
Yes.
You know, so I get what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, thank you.
So since you started this in the last few blocks, have you had anyone come in and fill out a form? Now come in and talk to you.
But Sissy, I just wanna say, there was a lot of, I mean. I think that could come, but I think people need to know, I just think these little details need worked out first, and then, yes, you will see people come in. But people need to know that everything's working together as it should be, there is not, no definition of what is appropriate. Then they can come forth and be like, oh, well, if there's no definition, well, I think this is inappropriate, and could should be reconsidered, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, because you were concerned that people are going to get in trouble if they get it, the one. So is that still a feeling?
I think this is all work, are you asking me?
Yes.
I think this is all working together to help, help that situation, yes. And the part where, you know, the board can redact private information, which I hope that they would, if they. Felt that was gonna be an issue, that they can redact private information.
I did find out that we can redact private information, but not names.
Okay, so just contact information. I mean, it's something to consider, I guess, because, yeah, I mean, that's. I guess that's kind of, that would be a concern of mine, for sure.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, I think this community is peaceful enough that there shouldn't be too much fear of repercussions for library book challenges.
I hope not, but I think all your policies working together can help that.
Goodbye to the policy committee for doing this.
So. We don't have to adopt this today, or we can. We can, it's up to the board.
She said, Ashley said, the bigger the issue, the longer, yep, the public's be able to make comments.
So. Janet, uh, Nona, do, uh, we want to wait another month for a third reading?
I'm sorry, were you addressing me? Did you say something about me?
Janet and Nona, do you want to go to a third reading? We can wait another month before it is approved. So that the public has more time to. Read it over and comment, and the board has more time to read it over and digest.
That sounds like a good idea.
I think so too.
Could I just ask one more question? Um, I noticed under the philosophy of collections development, it says it undertakes surveys to study its communities. I was gonna ask what that meant.
So we, we have not done one, I think twenty twenty-one was the last time, so that is something that we need to do. It's. Professional, what it's like once every two to three years, so that is something we're looking at also.
Is that an online survey type deal, or?
So like when Big Sandy did their last one, when we were looking at ours, it was available online and as paper.
Great. I like that idea. I like that it's in there. I just didn't know what it looked like. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, for bringing it up. Porpoiture of library privileges policy. This is the second reading, so. We need. Can move on this one today if we, there's no changes.
That looks good to me.
Nona, Janet.
Looks fine, thank you.
Looks fine, because I left mine home. I vote yes. I'm sorry.
Does the public have any comments on this policy?
And Nona, you can always abstain if you don't have materials. You don't.
What was it?
Oh, I can read it. It's very short. Porpoiture of library privileges.
Yes, yes, I agree. I did read it. I have read it. Yep.
All right, then, I would entertain a motion to approve the forfeiture of library privileges. As written.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go he- go, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the forfeiture of library privileges, privileges policy as written.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? No care. All right. Nona, is there any update on the Big Sandy gutter projects?
The gutters are, I have not gone outside to look at them. I've talked a couple times with Jamesy. And he has some ideas, and he changed it the way he thought it would be better, but I haven't had a chance. And the door parts are ordered, and I've not heard from Randy, but the gutters are done. And I sent a bill to Emily.
Yeah, and that got submitted. And there hasn't really been any rain or snow since they've put in. So we haven't been able to experience.
Yes.
Yes, there has been. Yes. I went up there the day after we had the large snow. We got eight inches. And the gutters were working. What they did is they moved it from the one side, went over the. Above the archway and down the other side. But I noticed when I went out there to look. That it was doing some pooling, so the water was making its own water way. But um, but when I talked to Darlene, she said. When we get the gravel in, that'd be a good area, just to put the gravel in, so that all that dirt doesn't move.
So put the gravel in the parking space and. Yeah, and that's. Sidewalk and between the sidewalk and the other building.
Correct.
Yeah, and that is my fault, because I need to talk to the county or whoever does the gravel. I have not done that yet, but I will, okay?
Thank you, Nona. Yeah, thank you, Nona. That's awesome. I'm glad it's coming together.
You're welcome.
All right. New business? All right, no new business, and we'll go on to public comment items, not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. All right. Next meeting is noon on Wednesday, December twentieth, which is a little different, right? Third Wednesday of the month because of Christmas, um in Fort Benton. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
There, that's how I'm feeling. Look at that giant thing. No, I'm, I still need it, but I'm going to PT tomorrow, so I'm getting long. Thank you. I I hope to be uh at the December meeting.
So that, Janet. Hello, Roger.
We are still here.
And I have ten minutes. Okay, so Roger and, Roger and Kim. Yes. You're on.
Very little though, also.
I saw it standing, I went back and. I think you actually talked to your daughter, though.
See a couple pictures, but she was doing tennis and volleyball at the same time, so it's a lot. But anyway. So Roger and I went and talked, Roger and Milcey went and talked to banks, but we talked to Ori at First Bank, and he believes. There is a six-month CD special coming out this next week, that. Um he's confident to be four percent or above. And their branch, First Bank of Montana, also has a branch, excuse me, in Big Sandy. So it's kind of local to two of our branches.
Sounds good, thank you.
We have, how much can Kim?
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars.
We asked, yeah, are there any immediate needs for that kind of money to be. Shielded there? We're drawing about six points, point zero two percent. Yeah. And uh depending on how much we want to put away in the, of that two hundred and twenty. Probably seven savings, you know, and that we probably should be investing some of that. At a higher interest rate, sooner the better.
Yeah, and we, we use two hundred thousand and still have almost forty in liquid. And it sounds like, I don't know of any large scale things we'd be doing in the next six months.
No, and we could break it up into increments.
Okay.
Send, doing the two hundred, you could do four fifties. And then even if we had to take one, it wouldn't disrupt any of the others.
It's true, uh, I was gonna say something, but I forgot.
I think, yeah, I think if you do have to take it out early, the penalty is you lose three months of interest. So basically, if you take it out within the first. If you can take it out after three months, you're still probably ahead from just the savings account.
Generally, you get a larger, but they, they're apprehensive a little bit too of doing too large for a longer one, so you'll see some. Intermittent work from anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand up. Yeah, I mean, you could do two one hundreds for six months and.
And then if you had the emergency happened. Then you're only pulling out fifty instead of pulling out two hundred and losing, you know, the penalties on that's gonna be more.
That makes sense.
Then.
But um, I think you made a good point about keeping it local, because Ori did point out that the bank has done a lot for the community and continues to do a lot for the community.
So is that the only big bet?
We went to First Bank, or the other bank, in Fort Benton.
There's no stockman here, is there?
Yeah, no. US banks, I mean, not appreciably different, they're four point five percent. And hopefully the special will be right there, like four or above. And to have at the same bank and a branch in Big Sandy.
Yeah, and deposits are insured for two hundred and fifty thousand. So that breaks up into the two hundred thousand into four segments.
Just depending on how mu- how the interest rates would be from fifty to a hundred, you know, that would be the only.
Yeah, depending on what interest is accrued, yes.
I mean, maybe we do one at fifty and the rest of it in another one, like.
Fifty and one fifty?
Yeah, yeah, if it's a better way.
Yeah. And if they're the same rate, and I would think that, you know, we want to, I don't know if that has to be a board approval. Or if that is just a administrative decision by the board.
I think we could make a board approval if you wish, because. And I'm here, there's.
Do we want to do fifty and a one fifty, depending on?
That idea.
I like that idea.
Ori.
Ori, because that's where we've been banking.
When it's there, they just.
Plus, they're allowing a staff member to spend company time being our treasurer, which is also.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a directive to do such.
Okay, so I um make a motion. I move, excuse me, I move to go with Ori's bank, which was, sorry. Um and put fifty in one and a hundred and fifty in other unless the committee thinks. That they, the splits are better a different way.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and within the next two weeks, depending on.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um and I would think Ori will let us know if we need a signature from, because you're chairman or Jen?
Janet is. I'm chairman, and I'm here. I mean, I'm, I'm coming back.
All the last stuff they can do online, but okay, hopefully we can just do it.
Well, if not, Janet, are you, you're gone for about a month, right?
No, 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 I'm back on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Roger and I have signing authority, so are you comfortable with us signing the paperwork?
I'm definitely comfortable with your signing.
Sounds good.
Comfortable you is working with the committee. So do we have a motion? Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
All second.
Thank you.
Danny's motion.
You want to do all in favor, Janet?
Yes.
All in favor?
Anyone post?
Nope.
Emily, that's good with you.
You live here now.
All right.
You sleep on the short couch.
Anybody wants a recording, just let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.